For today, we're going to kick it off with Lee Lawson as a presentation. Bowlin County Economic Development Alliance with the proposed application for the K-1 Center.
Yes, Councilman Conyers, Councilman. Hope everybody's doing all right today. Monday after a great start. Two years ago, the city purchased the K-1 Center from Bowlin County Schools amongst a myriad of other properties that were involved in that deal. We took an initial approach at applying for an Economic Development Administration grant to house Hatch, which is our technology entrepreneurial development center that's in partnership not only with the city but Coastal Alabama Community College and the University of Alabama and BBVA Compass. So, in that process, we applied for not only the purchase of the property but also the renovation of the K-1 Center main building there. That application was denied. The grant funding was denied for an ask of about $7 million between the purchase and the renovation of the facility. Since then, that was a part of a disaster declaration. This area has not been a part of, it's been a part of one other disaster declaration, which in the previous administration we did not apply for. We now are under consideration from the American Rescue Plan for another notice of funding that has yet to come out yet. We are anticipating, based on the conversations with the Economic Development Administration, a notice of funding opportunity within the next month for another round of funding for this type of application. Our application has been updated and modified, given current standards and the fact that when we did apply Hatch was in a feasibility state. Now, two years later, we've been operating within the BBVA Compass building now with engagement of over 27 tech entrepreneurs and what we call a lease agreement with 12 active tech entrepreneurs currently at Hatch that are being incubated and housed there, of course, in a smaller environment. So, here before you tonight to kind of update you on where things stand, we've had our local EDA rep, which is Michael Mills, that covers the state of Alabama for the Economic Development Administration, review our grant application. He and I had a call as late as this morning to discuss that. He's given us some feedback for our team. Jessica Sawyer, Stacy McKean, and then Rick Miller, who runs Hatch, are all working on this grant application together. If it's the council's wishes to proceed again, the outline of the grant is an 80/20 match, given the fact that it is still a disaster declaration due to COVID. And so, the American Rescue Plan put a disaster declaration on the entire country. Typically, when we've applied for these in the past, the disaster declaration has been because of a storm or because of a certain geographic designation for a disaster declaration. So, the current budget is three and a half million for the renovation of the main school building, the first floor, with a, you know, a 10% contingency in there and the 20% match. The city would be the lead applicant on the grant. And to apply for the grant, all that's needed is not only the application, which staff and our team are working on, but a 20%, a resolution guaranteeing a 20% match if awarded. The way EDA grants work is they are, they are, you submit the expenses on the front end, you cash flow them, and then they are reimbursed by EDA in the grant amount. And of course, Kim is very familiar with the process, and we've talked to them about the timing of award, which would be probably this fall, given when the notice of funding opportunity will be put out there. Still could be a month time. It sits currently in the Office of Management and Budget to be approved and all the aspects of this notice of funding opportunity approved. Through these same monies, there'll be five additional notice of funding opportunities for different types of endeavors, but the one that we currently are targeting should be released hopefully within the next month. Happy to answer any questions you may have. The funds can go towards vertical construction, they can go towards horizontal infrastructure, but what we have targeted in this application is the renovation and reconditioning of the K-1 Center school building.
So, no action that we could take prior to notice of funding coming out, correct?
Well, I mean, we would probably, if we get a better indication from Michael Mills that the notice of funding is imminent, then we would probably come back to a city council meeting and ask for that resolution so that we can be prepared as soon as the notice is open to be first in line.
Okay. So, it's sort of a first come, first served?
It is, yeah. It's a competitive grant process. Our region is the southeast, so basically North Carolina to Mississippi and the eight states in that southeast region, which is then handled by the regional office out of Atlanta. Phil Paradise is the regional director for EDA and was there as the regional director the first time we submitted this application as well.
Is this grant covering any engineering?
It does. So, as long as any engineering services have not been procured for the project already, then soft costs are included in the grant award, which they would be eligible for this opportunity.
You may have said this, but how much is the, are we at?
Eighteen, twenty.
Three and a half million.
Three and a half, and we need 20% of that.
That's seven hundred.
That's correct. Seven hundred thousand would be the 20% match.
Okay. Any questions for Lee Lawson?
No. Now, how much were we asking before? Seven million? Is that correct?
Yes, seven million between, and that was for the acquisition of the property cost because it was currently, it was under contract at that time when we applied previously. And so, we put the acquisition of the property and the construction of the facility in the grant application then, which is eligible. But it was considered a pretty rich ask the previous time around, based on the allowed amount of funds that the EDA had.
Okay, all right. This might be a minor part. Jenny, you asked if we could start early, and yet we can't start without engineering or architecture drawings, is that correct?
Well, we can't procure those services. We've had the-
You don't have the services, you don't have the drawings. If you don't have the drawings, you can't start.
Well, we've done it in an original takeoff. When you did procurement of the building, we had engineering takeoff then. So, as long as you're not procuring those services, we've already had them done, but as long as they're not procured as a part of this process, you can include them in the grant award.
Yeah, my question was more of, the next step is for us to do, or pass a resolution authorizing a 20% match, and I didn't know if we could actually do that prior to them issuing the official notice of funding.
Yes, absolutely. It's a requirement of the application, and so, we would sit there ready to submit the application once the notice is opened.
So, you have to have our resolution to apply appropriately?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, if everybody's in favor of doing this, and we've talked about this, I think, quite a bit, we'd probably want to try to get something on an agenda in the near, near future so that you can move forward with that as soon as they open the-
Yes, my understanding your next meeting's in three weeks, is that correct?
Yep.
That would probably be the right timing to discuss then. Happy to come back then.
And what's the deadline? Lee, you might have said it, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, it's, you know, currently the EDA said that they've submitted the notice up to the Office of Management and Budget at the White House, and they're waiting on the White House to concur. And so, as soon as that happens, the notice of funding will go out. They're saying anywhere from the next two weeks to a month, but they said that a month ago.
And since it's a first come, first served?
It's a competitive, yeah. I see what you're saying. So, it's already, we don't-
We want to be in line. When they open it up, we want to file.
We want to be ready. And we've been working the last several months with staff and the mayor to make sure that the application is meeting and checking all the boxes so that it's, when we do submit, it's not kicked back for any technical reasons. And we feel like we're in a good spot.
Jessica, you can help him get that on the next council agenda. All right. Any other questions for Lee? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate what you do. Yes, sir.
All right. All right, next up, we've got Working Waterfront ADA Compliance Report, Rick Henricks.
Thank you, Councilman Conyers. I'd like to begin by saying I was engaged last month by the city to get involved in this project on a consulting basis. A little bit about my background, first and foremost, I'm a 44-year resident of Fairhope. I raised my children here, family here, very intimately involved with Fairhope, both personally and professionally. I've had an opportunity to take a look at the waterfront area, and I've got some opinions which I've reflected in an executive summary to the council as well. I think it's appropriate for those here, as well as listening online and watching online, to give you a little bit about my background. So, if I would, I'll read you my bio that's in that executive summary. I'm an expert consultant in accessible buildings, facilities, and the ADA. I received my bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Troy University. Since 2013, I've been working as an independent consultant while forming my company, Compliance Support Associates. Prior to then, I was employed as a contract civil investigator for the U.S. Attorney's Office in the Southern District of Alabama and Northern District of Florida. While working in that capacity, I served as a member of the affirmative civil enforcement team. Under the direction of the ACE Coordinator and other Assistant U.S. Attorneys and Main Justice Personnel, I was involved in a number of disability rights initiatives, including Project Civic Access and other investigation addressing both ADA and Fair Housing Act noncompliance. This valuable field experience provided me substantial field time and Department of Justice training to investigate a broad range of public facilities, correctional institutions, pedestrian right-of-way facilities, places of public accommodation, including commercial buildings, medical offices, recreational facilities, hotel lodging facilities, and multifamily residential developments. Upon completion of my contract period, I was retained by the Southern District as their litigative expert. This transition enabled me to form my own outside consulting practice, which I did in 2013. In 2014, I engaged with Santa Rosa County, Florida, as their consulting ADA expert. I'm currently handling both their transition plans for their public buildings and facilities and pedestrian right-of-ways. Since forming CSA, I've devoted my entire professional practice to inspecting and providing analysis about accessibility involving the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Fair Housing Act, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. I've continued to advance my understanding and knowledge of accessible universal design and construction by establishing key relationships with highly respected architects and experts in the field of ADA, including first-generation justice department personnel fundamental in the groundbreaking implementation of early accessibility laws. I'm currently a member of the America, excuse me, the Accessibility Professionals Association and the International Code Council. I've completed a multitude of continuing education in the ADA and FHA compliance at Harvard University, Graduate School of Design, ADA National Network, and the APA. I have personally facilitated training classes for the city on ProAg as well as others on the ADA and the public rights-of-way compliance. Throughout my tenure as an accessibility consultant, I have trained and worked with colleagues with disabilities who have shared with me many of their unique challenges. The combination of my experience as a civil investigator, my professional education gained and lessons learned from mentors, the close relationship with individuals who have disabilities, the extensive professional research conducted for litigation, the experience gained in hundreds and surveying hundreds of facilities and reviewing thousands of pages of architectural plans in general form the basis of my opinion on how the facilities and buildings can be made accessible for people with disabilities. While I'm not an attorney and do not offer legal opinion, the opinions I do provide are based on my extensive knowledge and training and experience within a reasonable degree of professional certainty as I interpret the rules and regulations associated with federal and state accessibility laws. I had an opportunity to begin with two initial meetings, or two meetings with the city. Those meetings were with Madam Mayor Sullivan, Council President Burrell, Public Works Director Richard Sullivan, and Special Grants Project Manager Jessica Walker. Out of those, we began to, I began to understand more about what some of the real concerns were with the project. I also had meetings with the engineering firm that was Goodman Mill and Kaywood. We looked at topographical issues, topography issues, we looked at, you know, features of the plan itself, and I was able to gain a lot of good information from them. I spoke with members of the disabled community. I performed my own independent analysis of the public rights-of-way connections at Fairhope Avenue, Magnolia Avenue, and South Mobile Street, which we'll talk about. That seems to be a very critical intersection right there, as well as Fells Avenue area. And I also spoke by phone to some U.S. Access Board contacts to gain some additional guidance in just how to proceed in looking and viewing this particular project. This is a project with broad ramifications in relationship to both ADA, Section 504, and now because we've adopted as a city ProAg, the proposed right-of-way accessibility guidelines, we now have that as sort of an overlay as well. Regarding the ADA, the requirements obviously get triggered with the alteration provisions of the ADA, with the work that's getting done with substantial alterations to both the South Beach Park, Utopia Park, and the pier area. The ADA and the regulations, for those that really, you know, we see ADA compliance every day in our buildings and facilities, whether that's, you know, in our local grocery stores and, but when it comes to us, the public municipality environment, it's viewed somewhat differently in the fact that we have a program access responsibility or what we call program access requirements. The ADA works much like a building code in that it covers all newly constructed and altered buildings. But unlike a building code, it's far-reaching. It goes back and covers all buildings and facilities that were constructed prior to enactment of the ADA. Now, in addressing particular municipal buildings, that's where that little nuance changes some. The public under Title II, public entities under Title II are required to provide program service and activities that are compliant. They're not necessarily required to make every single building and facility ADA compliant. However, they are required to make all program service and activities compliant. And so, when we're looking at program services and activities, that encompasses everything that goes on down there at the bay. That includes our pier, our South Beach Park, our Utopia Park, our sidewalks, our connections that go through that. So, and each one of those might have a different and overlapping requirement of federal law. The, the public right-of-way issue that we're facing, when I first looked at the project, the issue that really I think needs to be addressed first and foremost, this is a connection at Fairhope Avenue, Magnolia Avenue, and South Mobile Street. In essence, what we have right now, we have a public right-of-way system that provides no wheelchair access at all to the centerpiece of our town. In essence, for most with disabilities, the area is extremely difficult and really non-functional for people with disabilities at all to gain access to that from a public right-of-way perspective. Yes, we have parking that's there. Now, whether it's compliant or noncompliant, I can give an opinion. On the surface, it's noncompliant based on locations of access aisles, however, you know, a lot of that's going to get reworked and probably get redesigned and rebuilt. So, a lot of that will be corrected in the project. The other aspect is beyond the intersection, because we can't, in reality, get a large part of our flow through that area. We have to rely particularly on Fells Avenue as being the main connection to get to, to get to the park from a compliance standpoint. So, if theoretically somebody wanted to gain access to Utopia Park from the center of town, they would have to go east on Church probably, south on Fells, and then hit that area where it is a little more level right there across the Fells crosswalk, and then they can get to Utopia Park. However, once they get to Utopia Park, they can't gain access to South Beach Park, and they can't gain access to the pier. So, with that said, the question comes up, well, do we need a ramp? And of course, in my executive summary that I submitted, I made the suggestion that, yep, you know, the ramp in and of itself is an element, is a substantial improvement because it will provide access for wheelchair users and those with disabilities that need that to traverse down to the bay. And at the same time, it opens up so many doors for those people that necessarily can't get there right now, other than going by car. And the, the area is, it's got some topograph, topography issues, there's no doubt, and we're just going to have to kind of sort through that. So, the two main areas, I think, well, there's one more, and we addressed, I think, in my executive summary, was the area within Utopia Park and whether or not we should provide some access to the bluff edge. And if you really think about it right now, wheelchair users, to enjoy a sunset, they've got to watch it from the Eastern Shore Trail. And for the most part, we have a overlooked program because we've designed it with benches where we can enjoy walking out through the grass to sit down and enjoy the sunset or whatever, we want to, you know, watch in the bay and what have you. So, access to at least one area of that bayfront is essential, is an essential program that the city is lacking right now and would need to provide to get, to get wheelchair users and those disabled that can't traverse across the grass to an area of the bluff that would be, that would be compliant. So, that's sort of a nutshell in my executive summary. You guys have had an opportunity to read it. If you have particular questions, I'd be-
Any questions or comments for Mr. Henricks?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you address the, the compliance with the Restore funding?
Yeah. Yeah, the Federal Restore Act has specific nondiscrimination requirements that, in essence, repeat the Section 504 requirements. And these, these requirements state that no person in the United States shall, on the grounds of race, color, national origin, handicap, age, religion, or sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subject to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. The recipient is required to comply with all nondiscrimination requirements summarized in this section and to ensure that all sub-awards and contracts contain nondiscrimination requirements. The Rehabilitation Act provides similar language in that no other qualified individual with a disability shall solely by that disability be excluded from the participation in, be denied the benefit, or be subjected to the discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. The Restore Act, of course, is a government grant program, and with that, government grant programs under Section 504, they lean very heavily towards disabled access compliance in all of their programs and grant programs. So, it would be incumbent upon the city to ensure that accessibility is really at the forefront. Now, we threw this out, it's okay, does this necessarily force this now to become one, you know, really more or less an ADA redevelopment project? Well, in the eyes of 504, it is sometimes viewed that way because of the impact that they really put up front with their nondiscrimination requirements that I just read. So, it, with federal dollars, it becomes a major point of concern, both making sure that it is ADA compliant and covered under Section 504 regulation.
Rick, a quick question. You know, just alternatives, as far as just in your experience, have you seen other ways of accessing our pier with the type of levelization that we have in these situations? Just options like going down Fairhope Ave on the steep slope? Could something be done to access from there? In your experience, have you seen anything such as deep? And is that too far away on that side? Because I'm just thinking, would somebody having to push a handicap person, walk down there, then have to come all the way back up? I'm just putting it out there. Is any of that a part of the compliance?
Absolutely. That was a great ques, it's a great question and one of the things that we tackled and that I questioned early on, because when I immediately looked at the waterfront plan, you know, I looked at, okay, here we have a current stairwell-
Right.
-that we're moving it closer, but yet we're moving now an ADA ramp further away.
Right, I'm just lying.
Correct. And so, in looking through that, the issues that we're faced with along Fairhope Avenue coming directly down the hill need to be further investigated and looked through from an, from an engineering-
Yes.
...perspective.
Of course.
Because what we would need to determine would be if offering compliance in that area, renovating that particular, what I would call triplet of, of roads and area, that we would have to look to see if that is, first off, is it, is it technically infeasible? In other words, does it, if it can't be accomplished, then it's not going to be required, you know?
Right.
And, well, then we looked at, can we cure it with finding a compliant route to at least get across the top, which wouldn't require necessarily ramp access down the hill, which might be a little bit easier to offer a solution of compliant access through the loop, maybe offer ProAg requirements down the hill? Because ProAg offers, and one of the reasons why my, my study was, based on that intersection was based on ProAg, because the initial ADA transition plan that was done was based on ADA, which is, which is a stricter compliance standard. ProAg is, carries less strict standards to some degree, so I wanted to see how we stood there. And, and once we really didn't comply with that either, I knew that we probably would have some real challenges getting down through there. The folks at GMC, you know, again, we talked about, they've not done necessarily, was not within their scope of work to look at compliance necessarily around that corner, but I would suggest maybe, you know, opening up that, that, you know, for them to be able to go a little bit further in investigating that loop. So, I don't know if that gets you where you want to be, but that's the answer, long answer to a short question.
Yeah, thanks.
So, in your professional opinion, we have to do something to improve the access down there. What options aside from a ramp are available that you think would be feasible, or you think that's the best solution?
Well, you know, compliance, to answer that question, first, I want to just back up and talk about, you know, what, when did compliance get triggered for the bay, for the pier, for that area down there? Compliance got triggered in 1992.
That's what it sounds like.
And so, you know, we're just now tackling it in 2021, but-
Wow.
And we have the ability now with the federal grant funds that we have to maybe take a real good look at this, because now we've got an opportunity we didn't have before. But to answer your question, yeah, you know, there's vertical access to possibly an elevator access design, there could be, obviously, and I wouldn't necessarily want to use it because then it's a possibility that it could change the fundamental nature of the program service or activity. You want to tear the bluff down to get, to get access, I wouldn't think.
Right.
You know, and then, you know, the, the, you know, putting in a, well, that would defeat why we are doing it in the first place.
Right, right.
So, you know, a ramp, even though it's, it's not as close, I've been involved in reading of, and looking at some other, for other particular cases I've been involved in, and looking at some settlements between towns and, and ADA advocacy groups, and normally the distance of about 200 feet. If you have, if you have a, another connection within about 200 feet of another connection that absolutely is technically infeasible and you can't make that connection, then, then within 200 feet is a, is a logical-
To make another adjustment.
Yeah, but we're about 800 feet or so away from that, that location.
It's a long way.
And we don't have any options, you know, so that's-
Right.
That's really, but, you know, the disabled community, in speaking with the disabled community, they'll take whatever we can get, and it's- And it's, I'm of the opinion that if we can somehow iron the wrinkles out to get around, to get access along the bay, then if we want to offer Fairhope Ave. as a pro-ag hybrid, pro-ag hybrid, once we get to our, our sightline, a set of ramps to get down, then if they can use that, then we're totally in compliance with the law. But now, you know what? If, if you do want to fully compliant, you know, it's another five minutes for you to go down the, down the ramp.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
I know that Councilman Burrell had wanted me to inquire about, or us to inquire about the lift he had mentioned in our, in our conversation.
Cable car.
Yeah.
That's why I was kind of trying.
Yeah, the, you know, solutions like that are, are unique and, and as long as they're compliant with the, the ability to gain access to the cable car and secure, you know, a wheelchair in the cable car, all these things have got to come into play.
And that would be an engineering thing as well.
That would be an engineering thing, but I do know they'd have to have a route to it.
You're right.
Clear for space to gain access to it, and then some way to be able to maneuver inside to then, you know, make the trip down the, down from the top to the bottom.
Right. And when, and maneuvering inside, do they have to have, that space has to be enough for a counterpart? Or do you only make room for that particular individual?
Well, you know, when you're looking at that, there's only best practices designed. We don't have a necessarily technical requirement.
Got you.
For that, but, you know, it would be the same as a paratransit might, might have. If you were looking at a paratransit van, they'd have to have a way in, what is the chair, and way to get down.
Yeah, got it. Okay. Any other comments? Next, next up, I guess, get back with GMC and discuss options. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rick.
Uh, next item I've got on, on the work session agenda, I believe, is Mayor Sullivan and Councilman Martin discussing the Triangle property and conservation easement.
Um, so the mayor and I, the mayor was so gracious to come to the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board meeting and, and have a discussion with that committee as well. But in discussion, you know, we were trying to find the, the particular way we want to conserve this particular land. And one of the options, and we'll have to make this decision as, as a council, was to use it as parkland and, and use the parkland along with a DECA as layers. There has been precedent set as far as Alabama Supreme Court with the Bluff that that parkland pretty holds, you know, as far as the word lifetime is concerned, as far as conservation is concerned. And those two options were between conservation easement and actually using it as parkland. And, and so that's one way. And, and we were speaking also on, on getting the topography on the land and kind of going with a young lady as a management to do a prescribed burn on this particular piece of property so we can start moving forward as an actionable item. So just wanted to kind of present that to the people in the council today. But Mary, I'll let you give the details.
So I think what we were talking about was we needed to decide, did we want to move forward with, you know, an organization that would manage a conservation easement for us, or if we wanted to, to work with Fairhope Single Tax? You know, in the past, we have been deed of the parklands through single tax, and that has been upheld through the courts when people have wanted to challenge that. So we talked about the possibility of being able to deed that back to single tax as parkland and having restrictions put on it and then coming back to the city. I do know that Councilman Conyers brought up a good point, you know, do we have to declare that surplus in order to do that? And that would be a question, of course, for the attorneys if we have to do that or not. But working with single tax would give us the opportunity to, one, you know, save, save money by not putting in a conservation easement. It has been, that process has been challenged and has been upheld. It would also give us some additional layers of protection. If we had a city council in the future who, who decided they wanted to turn that into a parking lot, then obviously, single tax would have to approve that as well. And if you had a single tax board who said, oh, yeah, a parking lot's a great idea. So they said it should be a parking lot, too. Then it actually, the membership of single tax has 30 days to challenge that. So I feel like that's, that's enough layers for us to have, not to mention we have, we have applied for a grant through a DECA. And a DECA also has to be notified, once we receive funds from them, has to be notified of any improvements that we plan to do or any changes to parkland. So that gives us an added layer. So we want to throw some options out there. This has been on the table for a long time. We really want to move forward, so this is the opportunity for us to discuss that. The next step would be a topo survey, and then the next step would be possibly working with Gina Todia, who's already done a survey of that property, to get with her and for her to do a management plan so we can move forward with removing the hardwood and probably doing a prescribed burn and doing some of the things necessary to get ready to start putting trails in that property.
Okay, so just a couple of questions for y'all since y'all worked on this. I think that the council was all in favor of moving forward in some type of fashion that preserved and protected that property. So right now, what is being discussed, or what y'all brought to us, is for the city council to consider deeding the property to the Fairhope Single Tax, having the Fairhope Single Tax place similar restrictions on the property as are currently in place on the bayfront parks, and then deeding it back to the city with those restrictions in place.
That's correct.
So remain parklands forever given to the citizens of Fairhope. Okay. And, and do we need to do a side-by-side comparison of, of that possibility compared to an easement and just kind of look at the two? What are the pros and cons of, of each? And either way, you're going to have to do a topo and a management plan, I think, regardless of what you do. And the management plan, people are going to get panicky if they see us in there cutting trees and burning, but that's something that needs to happen for the native species to, to thrive. So I feel like the, personally, I, I like that idea of doing the single tax parkland. I mean, that's what's worked on the bayfront and it's worked for a long time. What, should, should we, is there any need to have additional conversation before at least moving forward with a topo?
I think, I think we can go ahead and move forward with a, with a topo survey. We can go ahead and move forward with that. We can go ahead and move forward with some professional services on the management plan, knowing that we're going to come back and, and do either the conservation easement or work through single tax. I'd be happy to do a comparison based on, I think we had gotten a, a proposal on a conservation easement before. Have we not?
We have.
And I have not seen that, so I need to get a copy of that. I was supposed to have received a copy of it, haven't gotten that one. So I'll, I'll get that and we can look at the difference. I have talked to Lee Turner with single tax, and obviously, this would have to go to their board for approval as well. So we still need a little bit of time to, to make sure that they're, they would be on board with, with, you know, us.
And Mr. City Attorney, would you see any issues with us having to declare that as surplus property?
We actually have to do that.
Don't even have to do that?
Doing the, the, excuse me, the piece of the roundabout on 1313, you just declared it donated as a public property partnership.
Okay.
And it serves a public purpose for doing X, Y, and Z, play all that out as soon as you find that it's in that, in that public purpose doctrine, then you can go ahead and do that, and then they will, they need to do that. They have those expenses to do. That's, that's the way you play it out.
Okay.
Um, you know, my concern with the conservation easement has always been the perpetuity angle of it. And, you know, once you decide, when you enter into that conservation easement, what the allowed uses would be, you're locked in.
Right.
Forever. No matter what changes in the future, no matter what needs arise, no matter what a council 150 years from now decides is a need for Fairhope, it's locked up.
Right.
Um, which was the main reason I was opposed to that idea, I think, two years ago. This sounds like at least it gives us the option for some fluidity down the road if need be. Now, it's not just a council decision then, it would be some combination of council, a DECA, single tax, which I think, my hope would be, is if there is a decision made that there is such a substantial need to alter that property in some way, it's such an obvious thing that these three different bodies can agree on it. And if it's not, then it's probably not obvious enough to need to be done. And so I, I, I think this sounds like a, a pretty good compromise of the two.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Councilman Boone, any thoughts?
That was actually my thought back when we ran into the problem.
Well.
The whole world blew up. I thought this, this is pretty much a simple procedure to me.
Yeah.
Do like we did on the, on the Bluff front there with the colleague in Hamilton.
Yep.
I don't have any questions on it. It's terrific.
All right. Sounds like you got a lot of support.
We can still get that comparison together and we can, we can bring it back before you at the next work session if you want us to, or just put in the files, let's review it.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. I think it'd just be good to look at them side-by-side, but I do like the, the options of doing it with the single tax.
Okay. Again, they have to present it to their board, so we have a little bit of time.
Right.
But we can go ahead and move forward with the topo and also with the, the management plan, the professional services on that.
Let's do move forward with both of those. The Environmental Advisory Board, I mean, I presented that, I think, a year ago to, to do those items as well, just because we knew regardless of what direction we went, we would need to.
Yeah.
Dress those. So I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with that.
Yeah, I think it's time. I think we've been, we've been sitting on this for a while, so for the public to see some action taking place, I think is good for morale.
Agree. I appreciate you working on that, both of you.
Yes, sir.
Um, next, we've got the committee updates. Start down here, Councilman Martin.
Well, recreation, we're hopefully going to pan out our, our new scoreboard and, and get that all situated. Hopefully, we'll be seeing a new scoreboard. You know, I think the swimming, the summer is coming, and I know the Rotary Youth is going to be at the swimming pool this summer, so I'm excited to see those kids. I think it's very important for kids to learn how to swim. A lot of people don't know that's a problem in America, but, so I'm happy to see that. Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board, you know, very, very interested in being involved as far as, for instance, with our comprehensive plan with Neil and Schaefer, they, they kind of want to, you know, be on board with that so they can have some input and insight into what's going on, which I think is a good idea. You know, and I think that's all I have as far as my committees are.
Yeah. Councilman Robinson?
I don't have anything to report.
Councilman Bean?
Actually, we had a real good personnel meeting last week and turned out real nice. Travis was there. We appreciate your service there, Travis. Gave us a lot of updates and our next meeting, I believe, will be held on the 17th of June at 7:00 a.m. for all those early risers that would like to come and join us. Anyway, that was, that's all I got.
Okay, I, I don't have anything to report at this time. Now we go to department head updates. If you've got something for the good of the cause, just step up to the mic and tell us what you're working on.
Just a couple of updates. We've got a lot going on downtown if you hadn't noticed, and the good news is with this good dry weather, we're making good progress. We will have some additional activities on Section Street this week is our goal. We've got a, a fence that's going to go in at the, at the bottom of the hill close to Bayou to kind of serve as a view block of the wastewater treatment plant, as well as we've got the contractor coming in to work on the repair and replace the, the lights on the crosswalks. We are trying to coordinate all that so that we limit the pain to the smallest amount of time because it's going to cause additional shutdowns. Right now, we've had a lane shift out on Section and it's been a little bit difficult, but we appreciate people's patience. But our goal is hopefully by the time that we get to the end of business on Friday, we, we will have Section back open pretty much in its entirety with good weather. Other thing that, just to kind of update you on, we did hold the pre-construction meeting for the intersection improvements at Twin Beach and US 98 Greenoe Road that led us this past week. Contractor is going to start work the 2nd of June. With good weather, his goal is that all the lane widening will be completed, striping will be down, and the temporary signals will be up and operating mid-July to late July. So meaning, we're going to be able to get that work done before school resumes, which is, was kind of the whole goal there. Why I said temporary signals, the lead time on the mast arm pole is somewhere between five and six months. So basically, he will, the contractor will complete all the work, they'll be able to put temporary, the, the fixtures on the current apparatus out there, and then sometime in December, possibly even January, February of 2022, they'll come back in and install the actual upgraded signals. And as you've watched the work down at Battles Road, you know that's taken a long time. That is just a, a product that is, just takes a long time to get fabricated and on scene. Last thing I wanted to update you on is the ADA stadium improvements. One, our excellent city clerk did research of how the council approved the contract. It was allowing the mayor to authorize the contract not to exceed, so they were able to go ahead and, and pick that section of the contract where it was labor only. Tonight, you do have, we, we did finally get a response from a ready-mix concrete company, so you have that in-place bid on your agenda tonight. The next meeting on the 14th, we should have all the other materials for you to approve, and at that time, we will be able to tell you exactly what, you know, the projected material costs are. We did start our portion of the demolition today, so we're, we're, we are, we are underway and moving forward, and we appreciate your patience, and we're going to keep you up to date on that. That's all I have. Any questions?
And Richard, that includes the four ball fields as well, correct? That work?
No, this is, this is the municipal stadium work.
Just the stadium?
This is ADA accommodation on the grandstand, the home side grandstands.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
But the engineer, we did get the engineer for them.
That's on the agenda tonight.
Agenda tonight.
Oh, yes. Very good.
I have luckily kept myself out of involvement as far as, but I'm a big supporter of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
Ask somebody else.
Yeah. All right. That was a good segue.
Yeah.
How you doing tonight?
Good, thank you. Jeremy asked me to keep it short, so I'll keep it short. Richard just led into what your question was, the four ball fields, that, that engineering plan is on the agenda tonight, so hopefully we can get that moving forward. I have been working with him on some preliminary plans, so we're pretty much on schedule as of right now. The ADA thing, like Richard said, they did start demoing this morning, so I'm really excited to get that four-year project going. And I appreciate Richard's guys getting in there and getting us moving on that. The Fairhope Storm will have their first playoff game on June the 5th in the stadium, so we'll have to do a little bit of traffic control around the home side. If they win that game, they'll play again on the 12th, and beyond that, I don't know if there's a Super Bowl or what have you. I have not heard, so I'll keep you updated the best I can.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat. Bobby, how you doing tonight?
Good.
Fantastic.
Just give you some updates on the golf course. The greens are getting back in good shape. We had a few issues from the winter, but it's better. Grass is growing a lot better now, and we got the heat behind us, so that's going to help all the ball fields around town, and especially the golf course. We do have a junior golf clinic starting on June the 1st, which is next Tuesday, and we have some other camp activities with Pat White and with the rec center having a golf program this summer for about three days for the kids. Want to bring you up to date on, we are going to propose to you in a couple of weeks, the renovation of hole six and 11 on the greens to be redone. Jeff Williams had put it in the budget and with help of Pat White, we'll be submitting that to you next week and give you full discussion on that. We will mow some, we'd like to mow some temporary greens out front and redo two of the greens. We have some problems with the slope being very severe on six and 11, and we'd like to improve that. So that was a budgeted item that Jeff and Pat had put in last year's budget. We are going to schedule a couple hours on Thursday morning to allow Jeff and his crew to improve the golf facility, so we're moving some tee times back, a couple hours on Thursday morning. The golf course will not close, but we have asked already preliminary our, our people that play on Thursday if they would adhere to that to help Jeff get some of the work that's needed out on the golf course. Sometimes there's too much traffic out there. We're very popular right now in the golf, so it's hard for him to get all of his spraying, cutting, mowing, and edging and things he has to do on the golf course. But again, the golf course won't be closing, we're just spending a couple hours out there. so it's hard for him to get all of his spraying, cutting, mowing, and edging and things he has to do on the golf course. But again, the golf course won't be closing. We're just spending a couple hours out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Jason? Good evening.
Jason, Jason.
Just a couple of quick things for our department. But I was unable to make the last meeting. That's as loud as it gets.
Come on, man. You got a microphone, Jake?
Yeah. I apologize for missing the last meeting due to illness, but Tim Manuel filled in and did a great job, I thought. It's like the rest of all of our employees, they do a great job every day, day in and day out. So I always want to recognize the city employees that we have. The other thing I wanted to bring up tonight was we've got a very urgent need at the wastewater treatment plant. We've got an electrical panel. It's in the hallway that is it's overloaded. We've lost power to part of the building and then the outbuildings around the lab are also lost power. So we've got a, our electrician looked at it and it's going to be more involved than what we can do in-house. The panel needs moved, and we're going to move the panel into a room, which is a little bit larger than a broom closet now. It's where the air conditioning is, and that's where it should be. We're going to make that the mechanical room, and the electrical panel will be moved in there. So we had a electrical contractor look at it this afternoon and give us budgetary pricing on what it'll cost. And he's also a licensed contractor with the state and does a lot of work, and I can get two other prices. I would just ask you all to consider not to exceed, or if it's over a certain amount, then I'll come back. I would like to move on that as quick as we can. I generally don't cry wolf, so this is very important, and it is a safety issue.
We appreciate that about you, and we do have council members, we do have a resolution for an emergency to, resolution to be walked onto the board if you are agreeable to that tonight, walked onto the agenda tonight, because that's obviously a pretty important issue. And it's either that or we have a special call meeting, and I would rather I would rather walk it on tonight, take care of that, and let Jason move forward with getting the necessary repairs started ASAP. Got good with that?
Of course.
All right.
We will make sure this is sized for the future with a larger transformer, and it will be a larger distribution panel, so we won't be looking back at this in a few years, okay?
That would be great. Thank you.
And one other highlight, Richard touched on the work out here. Unluckily, we're going to have to dig Section up. It's Section in Oak. This is for the future as well as to to handle the issues we have now with water. We're going to bring Bancroft across Oak all the way to Church and tie that in, so we have a loop system also for the new development that's coming. So now's a good time to dig it, to do that, so it is gonna, when we do our part, we will have shut down Section completely. So I will work with Richard and Jessica to make sure that we work it around. And it could be something we do at night, because we can cross within an eight-hour period, so it may be something we come in and do in the middle of the night, so we don't disrupt traffic during the day.
Oh, we're going to be done in eight hours?
The crossing of it.
The crossing of it, okay. Yeah, I would just say whenever y'all are ready to go, just try to have everything lined up so that it's
We've got all our materials on site except for the duct line pipe. We're going to use ductile, and it takes a few days to get that, so we're still waiting on the duct line. We were warning Richard's contractor to be above where we're at, so we don't get in each other's way.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Good afternoon. How you doing this evening?
Hey, Terry.
We're good.
Just real quick, I don't have much besides we're extremely busy and working as hard as we can work and still a lot of phone calls coming in. People wanting to set these generators, I guess, before the hurricane season. We're trying to get them the best we can. A lot of them are having problems even getting the generators. I don't see them coming for months on top of that. But real quick, I just want to, I want to thank one of our employees, Steve C. He has been inputting the gas services on our mapping system. He has so far 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2018 all put on the mapping system.
Fantastic.
That's a lot. The gas department's got that. We got all of our valves on the mapping system, and we got a majority of remains on the mapping system, so that's a great thing. I just want to thank him for that.
Thank you for sharing, too. Appreciate that.
Y'all have any questions for me?
No.
No. No, sir.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
You'll be able to speak on the change order on the gas lines?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
What's going on in the world of HR?
Good evening. Hey, I just wanted to update in addition to what Councilman Boone said about the personnel board meeting. We're going to meet next month. We're going to start talking about safety and safety policy. This was something that was on their agenda back in 2019 before the pandemic, so we're going to review it, go over it, pick it to death, and then we'll bring it before you guys, hopefully in the near future. So just wanted to add that, but any questions for me? Awesome.
No, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brad.
Chief, how you doing this evening?
On June 12th and 13th, the fire department's hosting a firefighter survival class. Port City Fire Training Company Automobile is bringing in four national speakers and trainers, and a group of our firefighters is going through it, as well as firefighters from around the country are also coming down here to to take this class. So it's an eight-to-four class, and our guys are really looking forward to it, and I just wanted you to be aware of it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Forgot to jacket, Jeremy.
I was thinking, yeah. Couldn't make a time hole and get it, so I don't know if this is getting easier, just jacketing up there scowling at me, I don't know. Anyways, so today we had some regulated issues at Fairup Avenue. Went to close that back in, just let you all know, and Mayor doesn't even know this yet. We're going to have to kill Fairup Avenue substation in the morning, so if everything goes well, you'll never know it. If it doesn't, everybody's going to know it pretty quick, so. We got to take that station out to fix a switch, but hopefully everything will go well. I just talked to Jason. He's going to be digging up that area, and we've got to get some pipe in the ground to feed a solar panel there. So we're going to work with him to get that in also, so that's a good thing. Nichols Station, our contractors have finished Nichols substation, so if you've seen it, looks good. I got some fence issues that I'm working on that we got to take care of. But they have moved on, and now we're going to be taking out Valana because we don't have Morphe site available yet for them to work on next. So in beginning of June, we're going to take that station out. So we're going to move all our load off Fairup, off Valana onto other stations. A lot of switching. It's going to be kind of a sleepless two months because of the, it's getting hot, of course, and so you let everybody know to bump their air conditioners up to about 80. It'll be great, so.
I'm sure they'll listen.
It's not going to happen, but, okay, so that's it for me, I think. You guys good? Oh, the item on the end of the agenda, since I'm up here.
Yep.
You always put me at the end on the way you like me staying so long. You like me, I guess, but that's just some LED lights that we're putting from 104 to Parker Road. It's 40 LED lights. They're 277 volt, and they're going to take the place of the ones that are there now and be less load and look a lot better at that corridor. Next year, we'll add some more in there to continue on north, so. All right.
Good deal.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Yeah, absolutely. So I know everybody was frustrated and fussing at us. I'm on Riviera, and my lights were blinking too. Last night, I don't know why people were up at midnight like me, but the lights were going on and off, doing some crazy stuff. Allen Power Company had an issue with their transmission line that bled over insulator, ended up, you can actually see it from here. I had a couple guys tell me they saw it, so it lit the sky up pretty good and then burned down the static line, so that's why it was affecting all the substations. They got that issue resolved, and they said it was due to sea salt dirt on the insulator, so it just tracked over and bad things happen when that happens, so. So it wasn't us, it was Africa.
All right, thank you. Eric, good evening.
I just know people are very interested anytime they see exposed dirt around town, so I'm going to go over a couple of things. You've seen the big project site on the south end of town at the corner of Green 010 Battles, and we've also got the same thing going on at 104 and 181. Those are those are large developments that are going in. You're also going to start seeing some action directly across from the entry at Valana in front of the ball field where that former mobile home park was. We had the pre-construction conference with them, and they have a plan for an approved site plan for some offices in there, but they've got to take out all of the old infrastructure and get all that going. So, and we've got continual things coming in, so there's just a lot of work going on.
Appreciate it. A lot of people want to move here. Kim, I know you've got some good news for us, right?
Last week, we got approval on $7.3 million from our large debris cleanup. And as of this today, actually got the final official letter from state EMA that that funding should be put in our bank. I expected it today or tomorrow, but I got a notice on the state's payment site. They sent emails as payments are coming through, so I got that on Saturday. I sent that out to to the commission, so, or council members. So I expect the $7 million probably to be in the bank tomorrow. Our next largest project is the electric department. There was, there were some things in the mutual aid contract that they they're getting hung up on, and they're getting really nitpicky on some items. Jeremy's learned a lot on putting GPS on some locations, some lights. I mean, so it's been a learning, you know, a learning curve for a lot, you know, that hasn't experienced this kind of storm before, so, you know, FEMA's asking for a lot of information. And then the next project worksheets that's just being delayed is project, is our buildings. But once all all of our cleanup has been done, then we'll get our 12.5% state match. So that's really going to depend on, like at the Marina, we still can't get a contractor to bid on that project. Richard's having to go back and, you know, really look at the the scope, so those those things, it's what's going to slow us down from getting finalized, cleaned up, and getting our final payments done. So hopefully it does not take us two years, but, you know.
Well, I just appreciate you getting that $7 million. That was, it's a nice windfall.
Yeah, that's the, that's the big, that's the big chunk.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Anybody else? Hunter, Jessica, y'all got anything? No? Okay, anybody else? All right. Nobody else has anything, let's go through the agenda meeting real quick. All right. Looking through the agenda. Line item number five is a public hearing. That's just about the Coca-Cola bottling machines. Number six is an ordinance declaring that that parcel of land at 13 and 32 that Richard was referring to, or Marcus was referring to earlier, surplus land for that, so we can do the ingress egress. Next, we've got number seven is a resolution. This is going to be conversation about the city council authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of intent with FIF on leasing a portion of the K-1 Center property. And we've we've got that parcel out. It would basically be the land that encompasses the four buildings that are being proposed to be used as a steam center, and then also the Pelican's Nest with a small parcel kind of in between connecting those properties. It would be an outdoor classroom, so that's being proposed for a 25-year lease at a dollar a year with details that we can, we can iron out through the through the process of of getting that lease prepared. Line eight is a resolution. That's the TAP grant, and that would be to construct new sidewalks, so Richard, that'd be you, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, you'd be number seven on the FIF? All right. Number nine, that's the, an extension of the RSA agreement. Would that be be Jason or would that be Mayor? Speak to that one.
Marcus.
Marcus?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right. Number 10. That is, okay, 10 is related to the lease with the swim. Pat, would that be? Yeah, Mayor, okay. Number 11 is for SE Civil to do the professional engineering on water main replacement. Jason, same that to you right away. Leve Engineering, number 12, that's for the ball fields. Pat? We're 13. 13 is encompass 360. This is the Safe Room Grant application for the FEMA. First responder, is that Jessica?
Jessica.
All right. Resolution on line number 14, this is a comprehensive land use plan. Mayor, that would be you or Jess? Jessica. Jessica on that one as well? All right. Line number 15, this is the change order on Church Street Utility Drainage Replacement of gas line. Terry, is that, you were talking about that earlier?
Yeah, the change.
All right. Line 16, resolution, this is on the Signa UV Treatment Plant for the Sewer Department. I guess, is that Jason as well? Line 17, this is Ward Ready-Mix Concrete for being the city bid for for doing the city concrete. Richard, is that, is that you? All right. 18 is a resolution over pressure protection. Emerson Zeta Skater Cloud. Is that, is that Terry on that one? Terry, that's gas. Jeremy, you already mentioned this one on the 40 LED lights from 104 down to the two Battles. I thought it was the Battles.
Parker.
Parker, yeah, it says Parker. I thought I read Battles earlier, but, okay, so 104 Parker. Number 20, train Odyssey split system for for the Nick Center. Okay, Richard, Richard or Paige? On that one, and I know it's only, I think, $12,500 not to exceed, but I know in the last couple of years, we've spent a lot of money on the HVAC system there. Did we not catch everything or did just? Yeah, go ahead and cover now. We got some time to, time to spare. How are you doing this evening?
I'm good. How are y'all? Okay, so yes, this is, we did replace several units. Gosh, a couple of years back for Nicks, but this is the one unit that does front, do the front air conditioning units for all the front offices and a lot of our front activity center rooms, so right now, kind of our back ballroom is kind of overcompensating because the front is is not quite working. We've had Lance come out and given us a project overview. He is going to install in-house. But I also brought Kim Rylon along with me tonight, and she did not want me to to call on her, but I wanted to introduce her to y'all because we hired Kim. She is our senior services manager over at the James P. Nick Center back in January, and she's doing a fantastic job, so I want to introduce her tonight and let her speak a little bit. They're opening back up on June 1st at full capacity, so we're just trying to get the center back up and running good, so our seniors are eager to get back, so Kim.
I'll say, I'll say a little bit. We started, we've been closed for well over a year. Mid-March, we were allowed to have outdoor activities, so we had bingo and aerobics and coffee with the cop under the porch. And then mid-April, they let us come back inside with a few activities, but no cards, so cards will start back up June 1st. And our air conditioner that we need replaced from 2008 is working at 50% capacity, so I'm a little nervous about that. So we want to get that going as soon as we can, so we won't burn up. It's already pretty hot in there in our pool room, our billiards room, in our library, and in the office area up front. And Paige's office, I had to go buy her a fan because it's pretty hot down there. So the good news is, this is, as I understand it, this is the last commercial air conditioner that needs to be replaced. I think there's one little residential unit.
Okay. Okay. That's why we've done it. Okay. Okay. That's why we've done a few, but that wasn't everything. Gotcha.
And before that, I think we tried everything to duct tape, you know, water, keep it working as long as we could.
We've got a lot of weddings coming up too, so we won't have customers.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. I know that everyone will be excited to get that operating at full, full capacity again.
We're ready. Council visit.
Will be. Appreciate that. Item 21 is addition of appointment of parking authority from Morgan Slay. I do have a couple requested additions that we'll address at the beginning of the actual council meeting that would bump public participation a little further down. One item, let's see, one item is to walk on tree committee nominees. We've got two proposed appointments for tree committee, Knox, Murphy, and May Moss Parker. So we could bump, if, item 22 would be tree committee appointments. Item 23 then would be resolution declaring a state of emergency, not declaring a state of emergency, declaring an emergency to repair that electric panel that Jason spoke about earlier. So if we could walk that on as well. And then after that, public participation. And then we, we do have a need for an executive session tonight. And Marcus, it looks, looks like we're proposing executive session, and that would be for approximately 40 minutes. But you don't expect us to take any action at the end of it, or do you?
Possibly.
Possibly.
Well...
We, we can address it again at the end of the council meeting and see where everyone stands. So that's it for the agenda meeting. We got about 15 minutes. If y'all want to take a break. Reconvene shortly.
Yes, sir.